Welcome to the Business Spotlight powered by Payroc where we shine the light on incredible people that make our community thrive. Today in the studio, we have Kyle Gamroth, who is a Casper City Council member. On today's episode, we're going to get into what the city council actually does and some of the issues that they're currently dealing with. And before we get into it, I just want to ask you to like and subscribe. Obviously, I don't say that enough, but if you, it really helps us out if you can drop a comment. Why, why you appreciate these podcasts, you know, what you're learning, what you like about them, and if you can share it with your, with your friends and family, that'd be great. Keep this thing going. So again, thank, thank you, Kyle, for joining us today.
Hey, thanks for having me. Appreciate the opportunity.
I think your, your, your name speaks for itself. Many people know who you are in the, in the
Good and bad.
In the community. For the 12 people that still don't know who you are, can you give us a brief introduction of who, who is Kyle Gamroth?
Sure. Born and raised in Casper. I spent a couple of years down in Laramie for university, getting my bachelor's in psych degree, but otherwise, yeah. Born, raised and bred here. You know, I got some name recognition, just because my dad, we're in the studio, that he ran his morning program out of for 22, 23 years, something like that. And so, um, his on-air persona was Brian Scott. And so I got called Kyle Scott all the time growing up, but that was actually his middle name. And so, Gamroth, after he passed, everyone got very familiar with his last name. And so by proximity, a lot of people know me through that way. But, um, yeah, I've been on city council for three years and have really, really enjoyed it. And, uh, yeah, other than that, people probably know me by that and then probably in the Facebook comment threads, if I had to guess. So I spent a lot of time lingering around in there, but.
Making those comments, making that Facebook app happen.
Better for worse, yeah.
You're also involved in Rotary as well. I see you there at the Rotary. So you're, you're quite involved in, in city and different, different functions.
Yeah, I wasn't before my dad passed, but when he, when he did pass, I was just so humbled from the outpouring of people that, you know, had these stories about what sort of impact he had for their organization and the community, or them just on an individual level. When I was younger, I thought, you know, unless you were president in the United States, you couldn't really create much change in the world. And so after my dad passed, it was a very humbling experience and I recognized the fact that small acts in your little corner of the world can change, might not change the whole world, but it can change your corner of it. And so after he passed, I got really interested in, I reached out and yeah, immediately got into Rotary. I started serving on the Board of the Science Zone. That was the very first board I ever served on and I'm still on that board. I'm not able to commit as much time as I used to be able to, just because I'm stretched so thin these days with the other boards I'm on. But, um, so yeah, I just got really, it really compelled me to, um, be a little more selfless in my approach and try to give back what I could to the community.
That's wonderful. And you're absolutely right. Little acts of kindness or little acts of being involved make, make a huge difference. And I think that's important, especially as we, as we go through and talk about the city, city council. I think that participation is, is vital for where we live today and democracy in general is getting involved and not expecting things to happen the way we want them to happen.
Yeah.
And voicing our concerns. Um, but let's, let's start slowly into this, into this journey. Talk to us about the city council. How would you describe your role? What do you do at the city, as a city council member?
Well, um, we meet every Tuesday night, other than the fifth Tuesday. If there's a fifth Tuesday, we usually get that off, which I'm thankful for. We just had one a few weeks ago and it feels like a vacation when we get a week off, but otherwise it's every Tuesday night. I spend, uh, at least most of my Sunday afternoon usually reading our packet. I do a lot of independent research in between our meetings. And so that's usually my like homework day. Um, and also I try to respond to emails too. We don't get a ton. It kind of ebbs and flows, but, I try to keep up on my emails as well. Um, but yeah, I mean, other than that, I'm one of three representatives in my ward. I represent Ward Two, which is everything west of essentially Poplar Street. And I'm one of nine members in total on city council. And, uh, it's an election year, so five of us are up for, you know, five seats are going to be open and that's how it occurs. Every, every two years, they turn over half of council. So it's five this year and two years it'll be four. And then, uh, four years from now, it'll be another five that are up on the slate again.
And one, one person per, per ward, per section?
Three people per ward. This season, there's two openings in my ward. So two of the three seats are open, uh, in my ward this year.
Got it. Okay. So what are the core responsibilities? What, what are you actually, what are you responsible for? Your different team members or members, what are they?
Yeah. I mean, um, uh, you know, as far as the wards go, I can't think of a single issue that's come in front of us my three years on council that was specific to a specific ward, you know? So our wards represent us, but really, um, we're all kind of making decisions in totality for the benefit of the community. My role, um, you know, we all serve on different boards and, um, have different roles in that sense. So I currently serve on the Casper Housing Authority Board as liaison, Downtown Development Authority Board. I'm Chair of the Old Yellowstone District Board. I was liaison to Casper Youth Council, but that has since unfortunately recently become dissolved. And then, um, I'm on the WAM Board, Wyoming Association of Municipalities. And then I'm on a couple of task forces. I serve with Councilor Pollock on the Metro Animal Shelter Task Force. And then, uh, there's some, uh, my colleagues join me occasionally at the Homelessness Coalition Task Force meetings, so.
So yeah, when you said you're busy, it sounds like you're very busy.
Yeah. Yeah. Usually a board meeting or two a week. And then, uh, I try to really get involved in some of the other things that are relevant to city council, even if they're not directly under our purview. You know, one of the, um, common topics or popular topics these days is the proposed gravel pit off of Coates Road. It's not city land. Um, there isn't a ton of relevance, other than the fact that it is a city-owned road for a portion of that. And then, uh, obviously, you know, there's just concerns from constituents that live in the city about the impact it would have in the city. So I, I've gone to all those meetings and I tried to, tried to stay involved in those. The Blue Heart Collaborative is a group that formed out of the murder of Bobby Mayer. And so I know there's a lot of parents in the community that really want to see some change and effect in regards to, you know, how school district handles bullying and stuff. And so I made it to the Blue Heart Collaborative meeting and intend on going to the June 7th meeting that they're having for youth. Um, so yeah, try to stay involved in those ways. Any, any things that, you know, the folks in our community are really passionate and, um, engaged with, I try to stay in the loop on those things.
But you said it's an election process. You're not, you don't just choose to be a city council member. You have to be elected.
Yes.
So what does that process entail? Is it campaigning? Is it like, is it similar to a political campaign?
Yeah, it's a little bit different for everyone. Um, today's May 31st. I don't, I don't know when you plan on publishing this. Uh, my guess is not today. So unfortunately, by the time you see this, it will already have past filing period. This is the last day to file if you intend to run. And then, yeah, uh, you know, we got to fill out some, um, campaign finance disclosures as it gets closer to the election and stuff. But otherwise, as far as what the campaign season looks like, uh, this is only my second one, so I would not consider myself an expert by any means. But again, I do try to stay in the loop and attend all these things, uh, in the off-season if, if you say so. A lot of people do like the door-to-door knocking. Um, that's something a lot of folks do. I don't do as much of that, um, only because I have MS. And so I, I have fatigue that I struggle with and also being out in the sun in the middle of the summer, um, I, I got pretty bad heat intolerance. And so that's not a strategy that I lean super heavily into, though I do like, um, you know, I think I'm going to do some of it this year. But really I like to be engaged online, just because so few elected officials do have much of an online presence. Uh, and if they do, it's mostly, you know, boilerplate PSAs and stuff. There's not a lot of back and forth or engagement. And so, um, I'll do like Facebook events that I put out there, coffee with a candidate. I did several of those events, uh, when I first ran and offered people, hey, if you come to the bourgeois pig and ask me anything about city council, or give me your thoughts on something that is in front of city council, I'll buy your coffee for you. Um, so I like doing those sorts of events. And then there's several political forums that happen throughout the year. I plan on attending those. And then, uh, any of the local news publishers, if they reach out, I'm, I'm gonna, you know.
All right. So you can buy our votes if we get, go get, get coffee at the bourgeois pig.
Heck, yeah, man. I can use, I usually only limit it to five. Uh, the pockets are not endless, but yeah, uh, that's an offer, uh, I usually make folks.
So, so meeting, meeting candidates or meeting potential council, council people is up to the council person itself. There isn't, is there, is there a set organization where we can meet the different people that are on, on the, on the board?
Yeah, thankfully there's a couple of local groups. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce is going to be having a Politics on the Platt, I think is what they're calling it, event. I, I fail to recall exactly when that's going to be. It was originally scheduled for Tuesday night and I reached out to that group and let them know like, hey, you know, that's, that's when commissioners and councillors meet. And so none of us are probably going to be able to make it. So I think they changed that. So hopefully I'm, I'm looking forward to attending that event. The Naterona County Republican Women Do the Politics in the Park event at Washington Park. That's my favorite one. I would highly encourage anyone that has any sort of political interest or wants to meet any of the folks running for office, please go to that event. Cause unfortunately it's been pretty poorly attended. They've been doing it for a few years, but they hold that at Washington Park. I think it's most every Thursday throughout the summer. Each week they will dedicate it to a specific office. So one week it'll be School Board of Trustees, one week it'll be councillors, one week it'll be state legislators, uh, federal representatives. And so that is my all-time favorite political forum, because, um, I have a six-year-old daughter. And so it's awesome because I can go attend, uh, either when I'm up on the days or out in the field, uh, in the audience. There's a playground right there. And so, um, believe it or not, my six-year-old is not as interested in, uh, political affairs as I am. And so it's awesome to be able to have a space for her to, um, you know, it's great to be able to do. I'm a very family-oriented guy. And so that's definitely the most family-oriented, like political event I can think of. And you just have such great access to the candidates. You can ask them, you can write in questions that they get asked on stage. And then once they get offstage, they're right there and you can talk to any of them. Um, so that's a great event. And then I think there's a couple of other organizations that do a couple of political forums. I think Liberty Place for You will probably end up doing one. I don't know about city council or not. Um, and then there's another, um, historical, um, I'm failing to forget their name, but they held a political forum at the library, I think, the past couple of years. So yeah, there should be at least several opportunities for folks if you want to meet people in person. Otherwise, uh, there's phone numbers and emails that you should be able to reach out to. Anyone that files for office has to put an email and phone number out there. And obviously mine's posted on the city website. So if you ever want to give me a holler or shoot me an email, you're always welcome to do that as well.
So they can, they can reach you and talk to you and, and see where you're at on different political
Oh, absolutely. I love talking about it, yeah.
Issues that are, that are facing, that are not necessarily political, but there are issues that are facing, facing Casper, so they can reach out. And that leads us to the, to my next question about, um, getting involved, because not everyone wants to be on, on city council. But are there ways we can get, get ahold of people like yourself, more than, more than this, this ramp up to the, the campaign season? Is there throughout the year, are there other events that we can, we can sit down and talk with some, some of the people on the council?
Yeah, um, there's, you know, sometimes there's panels and stuff. I'll jump at every opportunity. I love when the schools invite me in to talk to their classrooms and stuff. I always jump at those opportunities. Uh, you know, unfortunately, uh, when you're not in campaign season, there, there isn't many opportunities for that. Now that I'm kind of looking back the past few years and trying to think of it. Um, but I'm always begging people and pleading with people to, uh, I totally understand if you don't want to run for an elected office, it is a, there's a lot of, uh, um, you know, things that you have to take into account. Time away from family, your, your name is out there, your phone number's out there. I got people calling me on the weekends and evenings and stuff. And I totally get it if folks don't want that. Uh, but there's tons of boards and stuff. Like I said, I'm on several different boards. We're always looking for openings. DDA, um, they might've just closed their application deadline, but we had two recent openings for the Downtown Development Authority. And so, um, I have a friend who, who is a, a big trail user and bike rider. And so, uh, I had asked him to apply for the Parks and Rec Board and he got on that. And so, um, uh, there's tons of opportunities for people to serve on those boards, on those task forces, on those coalitions that they definitely influence the decisions that we make on the council. And so I really, uh, encourage people, if you don't want to run for elected office, please consider, uh, either a board that's adjacent to city council, one of the city council kind of, um, oriented organizations, or just, uh, you know, the science zone. Uh, if you just, uh, you take your kid down to the museum and they have a really good time and you want to see that place succeed in the future, volunteer, uh, to serve on that board, uh, because they do make requests in front of city council sometimes for ransom funding and stuff like that. But again, just carving out your little corner, whatever it is you're involved in or passionate about, uh, consider ways that you might be able to lend your time, talent and effort to see those organizations and people succeed in the future.
That's really good advice. Um, how do you balance, um, this may be a curveball question, but how do you balance your political views? Cause we all have political views. We all have our, our inset mindset or worldview or, or values that we all hold on, hold dear. And the fact that you're representing a ward. How do you balance? Cause your ward might have different political views than you do. How do you, I mean, maybe for Kyle, but for everyone else on, on the board as well. How do you manage that?
Yeah. Um, love the question. Uh, so currently city council is a nonpartisan office, which is one of the reasons I initially ran. I, um, do not like this partisan polarization that we have these days. I don't like the divisiveness and stuff. And so I was weighing how I, how best to contribute my time and talent to the community back when I ran for the first time. And, uh, that was a huge factor for me to run for city council was the fact that it was nonpartisan, because I was, it wasn't going to be a right versus left thing. It was just going to be a community-oriented, you know, local decision-making, um, kind of opportunity. Folks, I, I haven't got, um, I haven't heard anything about this campaign season, but I know when I was running, there was a push from some of the candidates to make it a partisan office. And I will push strongly back against that. If it comes up again this year, I think city council is one of the, the last vestiges of kind of nonpartisan, um, you know? We get things done. You might not agree with the things that we're doing, but, uh, we get things done. And, uh, you, you can't say as much for, uh, some of the other, you know, even our legislature really struggled this year with just their, uh, you know, the divisive, divisive nature of that body. And so I do not want to see that creep into city council. And so I'll push back against that. As far as my own personal political beliefs and how they might influence or not influence my role in council, I try really hard to be as objective as possible. And I feel like I achieve that a lot of the time. I kind of have a reputation among my family and friends as being, you know, like Spock from Star Trek. Like, um, a little too cold and calculating sometimes. I'm not an emotional person. I'm, I'm not a reactive person. I'm a hesitant, proactive, kind of cautious person. I think about what I want to say before I say it. A lot of times on council, we've had several sensitive issues come in front of us. Um, you know, one I can think of is, uh, former Mayor Nell, when he posted a fire gif under a article talking about Wellspring Health Clinic opening up. And, uh, that was one of those events that got our council chambers filled with people. I spent a lot of time, probably an hour or two, putting together what I was going to say, um, because that is not a moment that I necessarily want to be speaking off the cuff. I had some things I wanted to say and I had a particular way in which I wanted to say it. And so, um, I spent a lot of time thinking about that. And then I guess also, you know, I, I'm not somebody that falls easily into a political basket. There's not a label that would easily describe me. So I think my independence of thought in that regard allows me to be a little less tribalistic than I think a lot of other folks could be.
I think that, I think you're right when, when you, when you say there's a lot of divisiveness within the parties. And I think that the labels that we give
And within the parties.
And within the party. Yeah, that's exactly right. Because the, the, the labels that we give ourselves usually turn off, uh, conversation. And I think that's, that's the, the crux of the matter is that we don't communicate anymore. We don't, uh, I might have conservative, more conservative views, but the majority of, not majority, but many, many people in the conservative party don't even want to speak to the people that have less conservative views. And I think that is the, the issue that we have on a federal level, as well as on a local level, is that we, we, we stop the conversation because of, because of titles, because of labels, because of partisan ideologies, instead of trying to, to deal with these issues that are often sensitive, very emotionally infused issues that we can't just, you know, speak off the cuff. And so I think that's one thing that I've noticed about you and other people on the councils, when you do, because I've, I've tuned in a few times to watch, is that you become prepared. And I think that is that whether you're right or left, or whatever, uh, whatever, you know, um, values you have, um, on either side of the aisle, we need to become prepared and we need to be able to, to articulate, you know, why we believe what, what we believe. We don't believe these things because my parents believed them, because I always voted this way. What are we, what, what are we doing today? And how does it affect our lives and our children's lives today? So I think you're absolutely right. I think we need to talk more, discuss more and understand each other more to, to somehow meet some common ground, I think.
And listen more too. Listen to hear, not just listen to talk. So, um, I'm a huge advocate for active, active listening. Not mu, not much of it going on these days.
Absolutely. And speaking of, uh, listening, how do we stay, how do, how do informed citizens stay up to date? Because I think that our democracy hinges on staying informed. What's happening? We can say, a lot, a lot, a lot of the younger generation, they say, well, there's nothing going on here in Casper. Nothing, nothing's going on. And I think that's partly due because a lot of the events, whether it's political or apolitical, um, are advertised on Facebook. And Facebook is not the, is not the, the, the means in which that, uh, the younger generation, 20, 25 and younger, get their news, get their information. So how do we, um, reach, how does the city council reach the entire population, not just the 30, the 30-year-old and up to, you know, 80-year-old that are on Facebook, you know, watching what's happening with, with Casper Mountain or with homelessness? How do we, how do we communicate? How do we stay informed?
Yeah. Uh, great question and great observation. Um, you know, I think the city of Casper, since my time on council, uh, we've made it. Me and a couple of my colleagues believed that communication to the community was, should be one of our highest priorities, because we felt like there was a lack of it historically. And so I'm, I'm really thankful to see the progress we've made in some respects on that. Uh, the city of Casper Facebook page is much more, um, engaged. There's back and forth with people. We have, uh, some marketing staff now, so the graphics are, um, you know, uh, easier to catch and more informative. And, um, you know, people really liked, uh, the, the most recent one I can think of is the Pothole Palooza post, where, um, uh, one of the gentlemen in our marketing staff, uh, came up with clever band names, uh, that had to do with like Streets and Potholes and stuff like that. And so I think that's been really effective. But like you mentioned, Facebook, there's a certain demographic that that reaches. People, you know, I'm 35, 36, uh, but people 30 and under, 25 and under, they're not on there at all. Or if they are, it's simply to check in from time to time when they got something to say, but then it's not something they're browsing on a day-to-day basis. So I think there's still a ton of potential, uh, to get on some of these other social media channels. We do, uh, we meet every Tuesday and we do live stream that to YouTube, uh, which I really appreciate. So if you can't watch the meeting in person, uh, you can go back and watch it on YouTube at your leisure, uh, whenever you'd like. And then there are occasional, um, opportunities for you to, you know, like the Casper Metropolitan Planning Organization, when we're doing streets projects. Midwest being a very big one that we're doing right now. There's multiple community forums where you can go, especially if you're a, a property owner or landowner in that area. You can go and voice your concerns or hear about what the schedule is going to look like and stuff. But yeah, I mean, there's, there's still a lot of progress to be made. I would, uh, as far as reaching that younger demographic, that was one of the reasons I was interested in serving on Casper Youth Council. I want to see those high school and college age, uh, residents much more engaged with the political parse, process. And, uh, if somebody's got a, you know, a solution to do that, um, I don't know how, how open the city's going to be to post it on TikTok or something like that, but there certainly needs to be a way to reach those people, um, um, outside of, you know, Facebook and, uh, the, the paid publishing in the newspaper. And then, uh, again on YouTube. We're on YouTube and I know a lot of the younger demographic on YouTube too, but those YouTube reels are a lot more captivating than a three and a half hour meeting on, you know, code enforcement ordinances.
Absolutely. I, I think that it's, there's two sides to this coin and it's true that our, the, the younger generation has a limited, like they don't have a limited. They have developed a limited, uh, attention span. I don't think they have one, but they have developed this. And so it's 20, 20 seconds or less. When I was, when I, uh, in a previous life, I was in social media and we would say that you have 45 seconds to, to get someone's attention on a website.
Yeah.
Well, 20 years later or 15 years later, it's less than, I think less than 10. I think it's seven seconds.
Yeah.
And I think that's just the sign of the times and our, in the, in the younger generation, even older generation, we have to get the information quickly and it's digestible. It's not necessarily a good thing. I'm not in favor of this, this, this degradation of, of our, of our society, but it is what it is. And so we have to somehow, uh, we can't resist that, because if we do, then we will miss an entire generation. Still encouraging the younger generation to stay more focused and stay more engaged in life and, and, and be engaged for longer than 20 seconds at a time. But I do think that, um, reels and, and, and clips and shorts are, are, are very effective. But there, there has to be another way to, to reach the younger generation, I believe. I think it's important to stay, stay, um, engaged in, in what's happening civically in, in our community.
Yeah, I agree. Well, and on the point, I mean, video, a lot of people like to absorb their news and their information through video these days. And unfortunately, there's just such a, um, lack of informative video out there. I would love to see some of the local publishers really lean into that. Obviously the city of Casper could potentially be doing more, uh, as well. But video production, you know, that's just one, we'd have to hire another staff member and stuff. And so there's always a cost associated with that. But I would love to see some of the local news publishers really lean more heavily into that. I love the fact that you're doing this, because, uh, I know you crop up these videos and create some shorter segments and stuff. And, uh, this video will be available to other people that can chop it up and get information out however they want. And so I think that's great.
No, it's true. Yeah.
Appreciate you doing it.
It's, well, thank you. Um, but I have noticed that the shorter clips, they can get up to a thousand or 1,500 views on, on a 15, 20-second clip. And so if we can condense, uh, a, um, a subject into 20 seconds, then it's great. If we can't, then we need to learn to, to be more, to, to have longer attention spans.
Sure.
A lot of times I think that, uh, um, we, there's a lot to be done with just asking simple questions. And I think sometimes, uh, no matter what demographic we're speaking about, they might not be able to ask those questions. Is there, is there a for, uh, a forum in which we can, the, 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 the city can ask questions to city council, uh, council people? Is it's, um, on the, on your Tuesday evening, uh, meetings? When can the public get involved and ask questions to simply understand? Cause that's something else that I've noticed as well, is that we have these, uh, news cycles or, and we see that here, even, even here locally, where people will spout things off and then it'll run for a cycle, you know, two, three days, a week, two weeks. And just, and just, and then it's nipped in the bud by giving the truth.
Yeah.
And then unfortunate situation is that that lasted 10 days. And it's, it's much harder to erase a non-truth than to actually communicate the truth. And that is, that is very, um, disturbing in our, in our current society as well. But being able to communicate, ask questions, um, as quickly and easily as possible could be another avenue that the, the city council could, could, could pursue. But can we do that at your city council meetings?
Absolutely. Um, so our contact information's available on the city of Casper website. Again, our emails and phone numbers. There's also a, I believe it's a button or potentially even a contact form that you can fill out and it will send an email to all of us at once, so that you don't have to go scrape all of our emails and put them into the same email line. Um, that's a great opportunity. Some of us have Facebook, uh, some of us don't. So, you know, that's hit or miss. I do, uh, I'm super glad you brought up the, the difficulty in erasing untruths as opposed to getting the real truth out there. That's one of the reasons I find myself in the comment thread so often. Usually Tuesday night, man, I'm up till 11, 11 PM or midnight, because that's when, um, most of the local publishers, Tuesday night, Wednesday morning, uh, because we meet Tuesday evening. That's when they publish a lot of the city council-oriented stories. And I have just found, uh, my personal experience is that they publish those stories and they sit out there for a few days. They collect a lot of misinformation and stuff. And that always bothers me, because that's what, that's the information that a lot of people are using going forward to, um, determine whether we're on track as a council or, uh, whether we're making the right decisions. And so I usually camp out in those comment threads, just to make sure that regardless of whether you agree or disagree with the decisions we made that night, that everyone's armed with the same information, the, the accurate information. Because I've seen that if you let something like that sit out for a few days, um, you know, uh, to me, the, the reason I'm so passionate about that is because to me, it's essentially littering the internet with misinformation. I get really frustrated when I see people throw trash on the street. And to me, it's essentially the same thing when you're out there just, uh, boldly throwing out information that, uh, a lot of the times it seems like, I don't know where people are getting it. It seems like they're just kind of making it up on the spot. Um, so that's why I try to stay active in those threads. But the, the best way to get in touch with us or to let us know what you think is to show up to our council meetings, because, um, emails get lost or sometimes we get a lot and we can't get to them all. Um, I read every email I get, though I don't always have the bandwidth to respond to them. So, uh, that always makes me feel bad. Uh, but if you show up 6:00 PM at our regularly scheduled council meeting, it's the first and third Tuesday of every month. That is the best time, because, uh, we're there as a captive audience. Um, it's live streamed. So again, you can take that video feed and cut it up or carve it out and push it out to your, um, um, channels and get more exposure that way. And I've just found that it's the most effective. Uh, you know, usually when people come speak to us in council, we have immediate access to the city manager and city attorney to ask follow-up questions or clarifying questions. We can immediately ask city staff to put it on our future agenda. Uh, whereas if we get an email, it requires one further step of us, like, uh, somebody like me, I have to have the bandwidth to see the email, to read the email, and then also pen my own email to, uh, the city manager, the chief of police, or whoever I might need to get in touch with. And, uh, so it, it's just more streamlined, I guess. When folks show up, I get it that, you know, coming to speak in front of a live video feed, uh, spending your Tuesday night, uh, hanging out with us at the Lyric, isn't always the most, uh, you know, interesting thing, but it's definitely the most effective as far as how to make sure your voice is heard.
Again, contextualizing the, the, the medium that we use is important as well. When you say email, again, the younger generation is not on email. And that sounds so ironic, you know, I'm, I'm only 49, but it's like to, to understand that even my children don't use email as often as I do on a daily basis. I'm sure in your, in your, in your work.
They're not even using the text, the native text messaging apps, you know?
Right.
When I show people text messaging on my phone, they're like, what? You don't use Snapchat to talk to people and stuff? So yeah, it's pretty wild.
And even, even WhatsApp is getting, is getting
Yeah.
Old for the younger generation. So having, and this isn't a place where we can maybe find solutions, but I can, you know, we can talk about ideas. But having a forum where they can send a message, you know, send a text message and they might not get an answer back in real time, but be able to communicate via some type of other platform besides email.
Sure.
I have one son that, that erases all of his sent emails on a regular basis. He has nothing in, in his entire email thing. And I'm like, why do you do that? But the thing is, that's their, email is not their communication, um, medium of choice.
Sure.
So I think we need to continue to think out of the box, how do we reach this younger generation? Cause I would say that, you know, I've sent probably hundreds of, hundreds of thousands of emails in my lifetime and my, my children, probably much, much less. So how do we, how do, do we have solutions? Are they in the works or is that something we have to continue to brainstorm about?
Yeah, you know, probably, uh, we have not, um, at least as far as I know, had any conversations about the city of Casper getting on Snapchat or TikTok or anything like that. And honestly, that intel, um, I wish I had more intel to go off of, um, as far as, uh, it's funny, all the, all my nieces and nephews, all the younger people in my family, I'm always asking them, how are you talking to people? Like what, what are you following? What do you, how are you, um, uh, coordinating with your friends? What do you, how are you, um, uh, coordinating with your friends on where you guys are gonna end up and stuff? Because I'm thirty-five and, uh, I'm often looked to as like the token youth in the, you know, uh, me and, uh, especially councillor Pollock, are often looked to to speak for the youth in meetings and we both have to remind people like, hey, we're thirty-five, my twenty-year high school reunion's coming up, man. Like, I might be the youngest person in the room, but I am still, maybe not as out of touch as, as some other folks. But I am out of touch with what's going on in high school and how those kids are communicating and what sort of content they're consuming. And so I'm always looking for that. Um, you know, this is a little off topic, but one of the things I wish that the schools would still do, uh, this is going back to when I worked in mental health, was we used to do the risk, uh, youth risk behavior surveillance survey by the, um, uh, CDC, the, um, yeah, I keep thinking Child Development Center. It's not, Center for Disease Control. But it used to be a national survey that we used to do in the schools up till like ten years ago, fifteen years ago. And it would ask kids about, um, I mean, a lot of mental health and, um, uh, drug use and suicidality and stuff like that. But I believe there were also questions that were asking them these things, like what channels are you using? How are you talking to your friends? And, uh, I wish we had more information. Other than my personal anecdotal, asking my family members at the barbecue, I don't know how to reach those kids. And so if there was anybody that had data on that or had strategies, I'm all ears. Would love to hear it.
In your own words, why is it important to, to be involved in, in civic, civic, uh, have, have civic responsibility and to get, to voice your opinions on things?
Well, like I said, I wasn't always, um, it wasn't always as important to me as it is now. Um, it took changes in my life for me to kinda recognize the importance of that. But I was always raised with the idea that, uh, giving, if you, uh, have any excess, um, again, whether it's financial or time or I, I was raised in a middle-class family. Both my parents stayed together until, uh, you know, my dad passed. And so in that regard, I was very lucky. I was very privileged. A lot of my friends came from broken families. Did not, uh, you know, struggled more financially than me growing up, um, had a lot more tension and, um, you know, uh, violence and stuff in the house. And so I always felt like I had it pretty good and so I had something to give back. And so, um, I guess that's why I feel like it's important is because we're all in this together. It takes a village. And so if you have excess, I, I feel, uh, you know, at least me personally, I feel like you have an obligation also to, um, contribute in whatever way you can to the community around you. You know, one of the things I try, uh, to do when I, when I have the bandwidth is, uh, you know, the Central Wyoming Trails Alliance, for instance, they're coming to speak to us. Uh, Austin's coming to speak to us on Monday. So I'm really looking forward to that chat at Rotary. But they maintain the trails up on, uh, Casper Mountain and our Rotary Club that we're a part of maintains the Bridle Trail. And a lot of people use those trails. Very few people show up on, uh, workday to swing a shovel and help out. And so I've, you know, I feel like if you're using, especially the free amenities, um, if you can't give financially, you can't be a donor, that's cool. But on the workdays, if you can, show up and swing a shovel for a few hours and then you can feel justified kind of in your use of that trail. Because you've, you've given what you could, uh, how little, uh, or large it might be to benefit the community as a whole, uh, for the greater.
Right. And not be as entitled or feel as entitled as, as, as many people are. So being involved, however that is physically or financially. Um, what's the most rewarding, um, aspect of being on city council for you?
I, I get a lot of satisfaction out of the small wins. Um, so for instance, I live in the River West subdivision of PV off of Trevette Road, right there at the Robertson Road Boat Ramp. And, um, uh, when I first moved into that neighborhood, I realized, especially at morning drop-off at Oregon Trail, uh, Elementary, there would be a huge backlog of cars. Sometimes it was twenty, thirty cars deep because there was two lanes. One lane, uh, to come onto Trevette and then the other one either to turn right or turn left onto Trevette. And, uh, if anyone was turning left in that lane during school drop-off, they'd have to sit there for sometimes multiple minutes before they could make that. And so everyone would just get backed up, uh, behind them. And so I brought up to our public works director at the time, Andrew Beamer, I said, hey, is there any way we could squeeze in a turn lane there or something like that? And, uh, they did it within like a week. It was awesome. And I haven't seen that issue since and it happened a couple of years ago. And so I get a ton of satisfaction out of the small things like that. When people bring it up on my radar, something I'm ignorant of, I, I, you know, I have my routines and stuff. I have my neighborhood that I live in. So I'm very, I'm much more familiar with, um, those things, but there's parts of town that I just don't get to very often or don't ever have a reason to drive through and stuff. And so I like when people reach out to me and let me know about something that I'm ignorant of or that I wouldn't have otherwise had the, um, opportunity to learn about. And, uh, I can follow up, you know, uh, putting in a stop sign because there's a right angled intersection and there's no stop sign there. So somebody could legally whip through that intersection, potentially hit a child or something. It's, it's relatively easy to install a stop sign. It's a lot harder to solve homelessness, you know? It's a lot harder to get satisfaction out of those big ideas that we can make progress on. But I love the small ones, cause that's, uh, that definitely helps keep me going.
I'm sure, I'm sure. What are the biggest misconceptions that you hear from people that, that know you're on city council? Or, or you, maybe they don't even know you are, but they, they, they speak about city council. What do they, what do people misunderstand?
There's a ton of confusion about, and I think it'll always be there. Um, I feel like I've been pretty aggressive in trying to get that messaging out for three years. And, um, it's probably something I'm always gonna be fielding as long as I'm on council. But, um, there's always confusion about, uh, sometimes people ask us, you know, what we're doing with schools and don't understand that the, the board of trustees is, uh, that's in their jurisdiction and purview. They make those decisions. County commissioners, uh, some folks, uh, you know, get us confused with county commissioners. Streets projects, you know, most people don't know how many state highways run through, uh, city of Casper, uh, how many streets that the state maintains. And so, um, uh, you know, for instance, in front of CY, uh, on CY Street in front of, uh, Rocky Mountain Outdoor Sports. It was, I can't remember if it was last summer or the summer before that, but that road was terrible. It was really bad. Whoever, whoever had, uh, done that project, uh, didn't do a very good job. And so we heard about that for months and we had to keep reminding people like, hey, man, at Poplar and CY, all the way west out of town, that state highway. And we can, we can complain to them, but that's not, we don't have a much, uh, ability to impact that. And so, um, but yeah, I mean, just making sure people understand, um, what is within our jurisdiction, what is within our purview. And then there's topics that, um, I find myself talking about more often, you know, like the one cent is something that it's been in place for fifty years. And still people do not understand much about how that funding is allocated or the fact, um, a, a lot of people believe it's a permanent tax because it's been in place since nineteen seventy-six, but we just voted it in two years ago, you know, it's on the ballot every four years. And so, um, it's been permanent in the sense that every four years, the majority of constituents have voted for it, but you still have that choice every four years. And so, um, yeah, there's definitely things like that, that I, I don't think we're ever gonna put to bed completely. But I'm, I, I also get a ton of satisfaction as far as like what keeps me going or, uh, what I get out of city council. I love educating people and, uh, so that they can be more effective, um, in their own civic engagement. If they're armed with as m- many of the accurate facts as possible, that can help them educate other people or advocate more strongly for the things that they're interested in. So I get a ton of satisfaction out of, uh, I'm a very curious person, so I love learning about the city and then I love sharing that with whoever will listen.
I think that's, um, I think it's an uphill battle, that for sure. And so you have to find that, that focus and that drive somewhere. Because I think you're, you're constantly fighting against misinformation.
Yeah.
You're fighting against the untruths that are, that are, that are, that are being, uh, spread across the internet and, and that people actually believe. And then you're also fighting your own, um, biases, you know?
Sure.
That, that, that the, what we consider to be misinformation, but it's actually the truth, but we don't wanna accept it because of our own pre- predetermined.
Absolutely.
Viewpoints. So that, there is that uphill battle all the, all the time. And so I, I, I don't know if, if we'll, we'll ever get to a point where communication and, and, um, a clear communication is, is, is achieved.
Right.
Because we live in a society full of humans and.
Yeah.
Humans are by nature not perfect, as far as I know. I, I mean, besides maybe you, but.
There's always exceptions, as we all know.
Right. But let's, let's dive into the issues a little bit, a couple of issues that, that you're dealing with. Let's talk about the one cent tax.
Sure.
What, what is the gen- just genesis of this, of this, of this policy, of this bill? And where does it come from? Where are we at today? And I think there's even talk about a sixth cent. Is that, is that on the ballot or?
Well, that got brought up officially for the first time this week. Um, so that's something I definitely expect to be hearing from more folks about. And, uh, and actively soliciting feedback from people about what their thoughts are on it. Uh, the one cent was first implemented nineteen seventy-six, I believe, or seventy-four. Sometimes, uh, I go back and forth in my head. But, uh, roughly fifty years ago.
Right.
And it was for, um, city hall, hall of justice, I believe, and, um, a couple of other smaller capital projects. But since that time, it, uh, um, there's a lot of things that it funds. Uh, now it funds all of our police and fire fleet, um, so all of the vehicles for our police and fire departments. It funds our entire streets budget, um, which we worked really hard to, um, increase, uh, during this last allocation cycle. It provides quite a bit of subsidy to, you know, two point six million a year in our water and sewer rates that we as rate payers would otherwise have to pay for. We still pay for it in some sense in regards to we're paying that sales tax on things. But, uh, it's like ten to fifteen percent of our sales taxes paid by people outside the community. So really, um, ten to fifteen percent of that is being subsidized by people that don't live here. Um, so we're benefiting from that. I think it's three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar annually to keep our pool admissions lower. And so, you know, uh, I would say the most common criticism I've gotten at least, I can't speak for the rest of council, but that I've seen and received about the one cent is it going towards, you know, there is, uh, two point two five million that we allocated this most recent cycle to nonprofits. That's the most common criticism I hear. And I can understand that from folks as far as taxpayer dollars going to nonprofits. The vast majority of those cases, um, without looking at the complete list, I can't say with certainty, but I'd say ninety percent of those are instances of nonprofits that are also managing city facilities. So the Casper Senior Center is a nonprofit, but they manage that building that we own and provide those services for our seniors in our community. The Youth Crisis Center is a nonprofit. I believe it's a city-owned building on county land. And so, um, you know, those are children that would otherwise have to be diverted to inpatient treatment or jail. And so that's filling a, a gap there. The Child Advocacy Project is kind of one that gets brought up a lot because that group does forensic interviews for children that, um, have been sexually abused. And that is a, you have to be very careful in the way that you interview children about those sorts of things. Because there's the potential to seed children's memories with things that may not have occurred or to influence their memories, uh, if you're asking questions in the wrong way or in the wrong environment. And so, um, yeah, you, you know, um, it, 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 it covers a full breadth of things. It's mostly capital at this point. But yeah, um, I love talking about it, cause people often don't realize that, you know, the two point six million dollar subsidy for water sewer, that's one of those things most people don't realize. And so, um, when folks are chatting about, they don't like the, the fifth cent, um, that's fine. But you have to realize that that subsidy that we're benefiting from as a result of the one cent would have to be covered another way. Which would, I mean, I can't think of any other funding mechanism other than it being absorbed by the, the rates. And so, uh, you would see our rates significantly increased if that one cent ever went away. And so, you know, uh, people are concerned about the way that that funding has morphed over time, where it's going to has morphed over time. But also when you, when you chat about increasing the rates at pools or water and sewer rates, uh, if you were to start stripping those out of the one cent funding, people don't like that either. So it's, it's very tough sometimes to gauge public sentiment on those things. That's why I'm always soliciting people's feedback. I love talking about the city. I always want people to, uh, sometimes people have a hesitation, uh, oh, I don't want you to talk about, you know, I have this question, but I didn't wanna bug you about it, cause, um, y- you know, you'd probably talk about it all the time. That's part of the reason I got on city council. I love talking about, uh, city affairs and I love hearing from people about what they think. Because that's really the only way that we know if we're on the right track or not. We, we have some surveys and stuff that we do for the one cent specifically. We did a survey before the last cycle and, uh, they, they reached out to seven hundred and fifty or so people and gauged their, um, opinion on what you want that money to be spent for, um, how comfortable you are with it going to these certain things. And we did our best on council to abide by that, those survey results. And I think we did a very good job with that. But other than those unique cases, unless you're coming up and speaking to us in council or sending us emails or texts or grabbing our arm, uh, when we're at the grocery store or something, we don't know.
Yeah.
Um, whether we're, we're on the right course or not, so.
So the, the, the one cent tax is, um, so basically Wyoming has a four percent tax rate.
Yep.
And so locally here in Neutrona County or Casper has the, the five, five percent?
Neutrona County has the fifth cent. So yeah, uh, the state has the four cent, uh, four percent sales tax of which the city only receives, I think it's seventeen percent of that. So, um, for every penny that gets spent, we only get, you know, again, it's point oh oh, uh, one. We get very little of that. And so the fifth cent is the countywide sales tax. And in regards to the fifth cent, it's inverse. So the, the state only gets about fifteen to twenty percent and then we get seventy-five to eighty percent of it. Um, so it's a lot more beneficial. It reaps a lot more revenue for us. I think what we had budgeted for this most recent one cent cycle was about sixteen and a half million a year. And so that's pretty significant for us. And, um.
I had this one comment and maybe it's just a, a, uh, someone speaking out of ignorance or not understanding, you know?
Sure.
Um, but they said that it's not really one cent. It's, we're talking about one percent. So we're not getting, you're not paying one extra cent for every, you know, for every per- thing you purchase in the store. It's one percent. So there's that mis- misunderstanding. But I, but I think it's, you know, calling it the one cent tax is just, uh, just a shortcut. But you are rep- you are discussing one percent.
One percent.
And then, and then the sixth, um, the sixth percent or the, the, the additional percent, additional cent?
Yeah.
Um, what would that be allocated towards?
So that one would be, it's a little like inception, man. So there's a state sales tax and then there's the county fifth cent. And then the sixth cent that got brought up this week for really the first time on the record, uh, that I can recall would be a municipal, um, tax. And so.
Okay.
Um, there was a big debate last year about, um, or maybe it's been two years and, uh, now at this point, about whether to make the one cent permanent. And, uh, you have to get all of, uh, Casper's very unique in the sense that we have Evansville Mills and bar none. There's, there's no other place in the state that has those sort of suburbs or those, um, adjacent municipalities that share all of the borders with them. So Casper is very unique in the sense that, um, you know, some of the decisions we make have to be in coordination and collaboration with the surrounding municipalities, cause we're, I don't think, very few, if any residents, when they cross in the Mill City limits or Evansville City limits, they don't really view it as living in a different ci- I mean, cause again, there's no gap. I mean, it's, you're immediately from one end to the other. And so, um, that's something I've been trying to champion. My time on council is more communication with those municipalities, more collaboration, coordination, so that we're not stepping on toes, so that we're not doing things that are in conflict with each other. Uh, but going back to the, the fifth cent, so yeah, that would be a city municipal tax, cause that's something that we could levy just as a city and not necessarily need the collaboration and coordination with the surrounding municipalities. And it would be to address these, um, huge capital needs that we have. Unfortunately, you just over decades, there's been a lot of deferred maintenance on a lot of our public buildings and, you know, our streets budget. For instance, that's one thing, uh, for the folks that follow city council pretty closely, they know I always talk about streets. I'm always talking about streets, cause we got a street assessment done in twenty nineteen that showed we had a, I think it was a fifty-nine out of a hundred grade on our average condition of streets, which is not very good. Our city manager likes to joke, uh, when he was in high school, that was a failing grade. And so, uh, I've been pushing really hard to get more money into streets. But we also have, almost all of our buildings were built in the eighties. And so forty years later, they're all in need of significant either repair or reconstruction. And, um, it's just really difficult to do these days because our, uh, the one cent was implemented in nineteen seventy-six, but the city of Casper has not, we're not making more money. It's a percentage, uh, you know, so we're not, our funding mech- mechanism not, has not changed since the seventies. But the services that we provide the community and their expectation of those services has absolutely changed. You know, in our Tuesday meeting this week, we talked about adding a digital records analyst to the police department because we're getting so many records requests for body cam footage from police officers. When somebody requests that video, s- um, it requires staff to go in there and, um, censor like sensitive information. There's always people, you know, calling on the radios and using people's names and personal circumstances and stuff. And so that all has to be edited out and that takes a, quite a bit of time. And so those are things, all the servers that we now have to host all that body cam footage, all of the laptops and computers that people are using to access that, none of that existed in the seventies and eighties. That is all things that our budget has had to absorb over time as people's expectations about services and our, and the nature of the workplace has changed over time. And so that's why, you know, when folks, their criticism is that, uh, we need to go back to the drawing board and, um, be more refined in our budget without, you know, exploring the opportunity of a sixth cent. I can understand where they're coming from. There's always efficiencies to be made and there's always, um, uh, things that we can be doing better as a council. But people also have to recognize that the nature of municipal governments has changed tremendously over time. My guess is we were plowing a lot less streets and there was a lot less streets to be plowed back in the seventies, eighties and nineties. But now, uh, when it snows, people want that street cleared within a day, man. And I bet, uh, you know, decades ago, uh, our ancestors and stuff and my dad and my granddad and stuff, they, they lived a, a little bit different quality of life, for better or for worse. And, uh, I just think that's something people have to recognize when they're making those suggestions or voicing those criticisms to us, is that things have changed dramatically despite the fact that the funding mechanism hasn't.
That's very true. I think the, the pushback is that there are people, there are staunch, uh, people that don't want any more tax and they're.
Yeah, and I totally understand, man.
Tax, taxation in general and I think tax, taxation is, 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 is not constitutional. And there's a whole debate around, you know, we're, we're at five percent, let's, let's stay there. Why, why should we go any further? But definitely the, there is, there's, um, there is, there are point of view that just wanted to, to slow down. But at the same time, I was speaking with a, an accountant yesterday that has been in the accounting field. an accountant yesterday that has been in the accounting field for well over forty years. And she said her IT uh, um, expenses have, have gone through the roof in the past forty years because just because technology is, is there. She started with ledgers and, and again, going back to youth today, if we ask a, a twenty-year-old, what, what is a ledger? They have no idea what a ledger is. They're using QuickBooks, QuickBooks Online, defer to QuickBooks Desktop. And so that technology fee has increased dramatically over the last thirty, forty years. And so it's, it's, you know, society has changed. Um, our needs have changed. And so we have to balance the fact that yes, we live, you know, uh, there are many people that are, that will jump on Facebook to complain that, complain that their, their, their street is never, never plowed or never plowed on time. But at the same time, it costs money to do that, you know. People are not doing it as, as volunteers to, to, to plow your street for you. So there's, there's definitely two sides, um, to this. Um, I'm gonna have to invite you back.
Oh, yeah.
Because we're, we only touched on one of the, one of the, 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 the issues that, that you're facing at, at the city council. And I think there's a lot of discussion that we could have back and forth on, on both points of view. You know, I, I, I don't know if I, I think the opposite of you on every issue, but we, we can discuss both sides of it. So I think that could, could be good to, um, to move on. Other than that, we're, we're have to purchase longer battery life for our cameras because our, my, uh, my, my cameraman is gonna tell me to wrap it up because we're, we're getting close to, to finishing. Um, let's, let's, um, let's just wrap this up by a couple of questions about what, what's your advice? What advice would you give to someone that wants to get more involved, uh, in city council today or local government in some, some facets today?
Um, ask questions, man. Like, um, I hope I don't give off the impression that, uh, um, when people ask questions about the job that we're doing, that, uh, I take it personal or, or get defensive about that. I do get defensive about misinformation. It's something that uh, again, I'm on a crusade out there against misinformation, but I love fielding questions, even if they're critical, uh, in nature. And so my, um, uh, position would be the things that you don't understand, um, or that you, you hear it and you're like, oh my gosh, why would they even consider something like that? My guess is, um, uh, the more context you get, the more you might understand the issue. And again, you, you might still disagree with the decision in the end, but you'll have a better frame of reference to ask questions and um, advocate for a potentially opposing opinion if you, you understand. And so I would just really encourage people to reach out in whatever channel is most comfortable to you, whether it's email, text, phone, um, in person at the meetings, at the political forums that they host over the summer. Uh, hopefully at some point in the future, TikTok, Snapchat, or some of these other channels for some of the younger folks, but just reach out and ask. And, uh, I, I think, again, I can't speak for the rest of council. I love getting those phone calls, emails and texts. And my guess is, um, they are all more than willing to talk about these things. Again, we're, we're all serving for a reason. We're interested in this and we feel a commitment to it and stuff. And so, uh, we wanna hear back from folks about how we're doing, where we can improve. And, and so, yeah, I would just encourage folks. Um, uh, it, it does feel like the environment, there's a lot of apathy out there these days. And I think that's why uh, we're kind of in the place that we're at is because a lot of the more reasonable, um, uh, people have just sort of tuned out. It's too much drama form and stuff like that. But unfortunately, then you leave it to, uh, you know, the vocal minority, the folks that I don't necessarily believe are representing the majority opinion. Uh, they're kind of the squeaky wheels and oftentimes squeaky wheel gets a grease. And so uh, if you're not speaking for yourself, you're letting other people speak on your behalf. And I think a lot of people would be surprised at, um, what people are saying uh, on their behalf. And so I would just encourage you to get involved in whatever way feels most comfortable to you, whatever, um, uh, way matches the capacity that you have to give. Uh, if you still are unsure about how to best to do that, please get ahold of me. I love making those connections. I love playing matchmaker in regards to getting an idea of understanding who people are, what they're about, and how we could plug them in to, uh, get them to create some impact. So please reach out to me. I love making those connections.
Will do. Um, I hope this conversation sparked, um, some interest in local government, the people that are, that are, that are watching the, these podcasts. Um, can you just remind us where they can tune in on, on YouTube at least to, to lis- listen or, or, um, your different platforms? Do you have a handle that, that you use?
Yep. Um, so my email is kgamroth@caspery.gov. Uh, if you just type in City of Casper YouTube, we also live stream our Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and, uh, some other stuff. And so, um, you'll have to look for the most recent city council meeting, but that's where you can find those. I believe it's also still on the Government Access Channel if anyone's out there doing that. Um, and then, uh, I have a Kyle Gamroth, Casper City Council War Two Facebook page, uh, that a lot of folks, you know, that seems to be their preference. I'd encourage you to reach out, uh, that way as well.
Got it. Okay. Well, thank you for joining us on this, uh, episode of, uh, the Business Spotlight. Um, and, uh, make sure you like and subscribe and drop a comment about the different issues that you'd like us to discuss in the next episode that we have with, uh, with Kyle. Uh, let us know what you thought about this one and share this, share this podcast with your, uh, with, with the people that you know. Thank you very much. See you in a couple of weeks.